Hi all, very, very happy evening to each and everyone. Very happy evening. Kindly let me know if you are facing any technical issues. Hi all, very, very happy evening to everyone. Happy evening to everyone. Kindly reply it in the live chat in case if you are facing any audio issues. We were facing some audio issues and there were some streaming issues from yesterday evening. Kindly reply in case if you are facing any audio issues or streaming issues. Once you say there are no issues, we will get into the class. Very, very interesting class we are going to discuss. It is going to be a very, very informative class for all the students. But before that, I will first handle. Few doubts asked by students in the Telegram group as well as in the WhatsApp group. Then I will get into the class. Kindly share these class link with as many of your friends that the class has just begun. One. Praveen Water. Right, we will start the class. Kindly reply it in the live chat in case if you are facing any issues. I hope there are no audio issues and there are no streaming issues. There are no audio and streaming issues. Very, very important class it is going to be. We will start the class right now. But before we start the class, let me see the mobile. There are some doubts asked by students. Let me first take that doubts, then I will get into the class. Then I will get into the class. One minute sir. One student asked me these doubt. One minute. The doubt is. Twenty-eight power one twenty-one power one twenty-three. Find the last two digits. Twenty-eight doubts. First question, find the last two digits. Find the last two digits for. Twenty-eight power. One twenty-one. Power two thirty. Power two thirty. Is this the first question? Second question, let me first take the doubts, then I will get into the class. One minute sir. I am just looking at these question. Next doubt is okay. Next doubt is sir. Find the last two digits for. Eighty-six power ninety-four power one twenty-three. Eighty-six power ninety-four power one twenty-three. Third question is, find the last two digits for sixty-two power sixty-nine power eighty-three. Sixty-two power sixty-nine power eighty-three. And the next question is. Find the hundredth term for. Find the hundredth term for. This came to me in my WhatsApp for first question. One, three, six, ten, fifteen, twenty-one and so on. Next one, two, five, seven, fourteen. Seven, fourteen and so on up to twenty-three. So not only we will do the hundredth term, we will also do the sum of hundred terms. Sum of hundred terms for these series. One more doubt. One minute sir, let me take all the doubts, then we will get into the class. The next doubt is. One minute sir. Eighty-six over, next one, last two digits for fifty-eight. Fifty-eight power seventy-one power ninety-three. Fifty-eight power seventy-one power ninety-three. First one, if you understand D also, you will understand. Next doubt is sixty-two power sixty-nine power eighty-three. Ten twenty-three, okay. Third question is, find the fiftieth term for. Find the fiftieth term for. Ten, twenty-three, sixty, one sixteen-nine, four thirty-four and so on. Any other doubts? One, two, three, four, five. One, two, three, four, five, okay. All the five doubts are there. Now let us see this question. One by one, second and third are very, very interesting concepts which we will discuss. See here sir, find the last two digits for twenty-eight power one twenty-one power two thirty. Eighty-six power ninety-four power one twenty-three. Sixty-two power sixty-nine power eighty-three. Fifty-eight power seventy-one power ninety-three. The first question doubts are from last two digits. Next is finding the hundredth term. Finding the hundredth term. Generally in our progressions, there is an arithmetic progression series. There is an geometric progression series. There is an harmonic progression series and there is AGP series. But the difference is not constant. The ratio also it is not constant. These are some peculiar kinds of series that are coming. Maybe the student is writing a cat mock paper and he got this kind of question. And he said that sir, there is a full page solution. There is a full page. Solution for it, can you help me out with a better shortcut? One by one we will see. First I will discuss this and this, then I will get into these doubts. First one, see, listen carefully sir. Note, please write down. Note. One, three, six, ten, fifteen, twenty-one, twenty-eight and so on. One, three, six, ten, fifteen, twenty-one, twenty-eight and so on. Now listen carefully. Now if you observe, is this an arithmetic progression series? Two, three, four, five, six, seven. Two, three, four, five, six, seven. The difference is not constant. But if you observe, this is two, this is three, this is four, it is five, this is six, this is seven and so on. If I further take the difference, one, one, this is one, one, one. The difference between the terms is constant in how many steps? Two steps it is there. Listen carefully sir, very, very interesting and an exciting concept. Two, five, eight, eleven, fourteen. If you observe the difference, three, 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 three. Difference is constant in one step. Because the difference is constant in one step. It is an expression with degree one for n. It is an expression with degree one for n. If the difference between the terms is constant in two steps. Nth term will be an expression with degree two for n. A n square plus B n plus C. A n square plus B n plus C. Difference between the terms is constant in two steps, then it is an expression with degree two for n. The difference between the terms is constant in first term, then it is an expression with degree one for n. I hope the idea it is clear. First write down these important key point which you will not get it in the regular textbook. The concept is, if the difference between the terms. If the difference between the terms. Is constant. If the difference between the terms is constant in n steps. If the difference between the terms is constant in n steps. Then nth term will be an expression of degree n. Very, very new concept to most of these students. First I will tell you the method number one as usual and then I will discuss the method number two. If the difference is constant in two steps, then nth term is an expression of degree two. If the difference between the terms is. Constant in an expression of degree three, then it will be a cubic expression. I hope the idea it is clear. Most of them thinks that nth term will be of an A P is A plus N minus one in two D. It is definitely right if the difference between the terms is constant in one step. If the difference between the terms is constant in one step, then nth term will be an expression with degree one for n. If the difference between the terms is constant in two steps, then nth term will be an expression with degree two. Very, very good doubt a student has asked. At the beginning of the class, I will take the doubts asked by a student community. These are some of the doubts which I got it in a Telegram group, which I got it on a WhatsApp, which I got it on a Facebook, personal message, so on and so forth. Now listen carefully sir. First I will solve this problem, then I will solve this problem. After five minutes, you can solve these toughest cat level question in probably less than ten seconds. Question. Two, five, eight, eleven, fourteen and so on. Suppose I want T twenty-third term. T twenty-third term. Let us not use A plus N minus one in two D. Now look at Anil Nayar's way of solving the question. Two, five, eight, eleven, fourteen and so on. These differences constant in one step. Three, three, three. Difference is constant in one step. Nth term will be an expression with one for n. T n is A n plus B. I am not interested in A value, I am not interested in D value. T n is A n plus B. T n it is one, it is equal and two, A plus B. First term it is equal and two, two. It is N value two, so it is equal and two. Two A plus B, it is equal and two five. Two A minus A, it is A. Five minus two, it is three. A value it is three. If A value it is three. Two equal and two, three plus B. B equal and two minus one. B equal and two minus one. So these expansion is nothing but three N minus one. Three N minus one. T n is given by three N minus one. Beautiful way of looking at the arithmetic progression series. Two, five, eight, eleven, fourteen and so on. Difference is three, 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 three. Three, 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 three. Difference is constant in one step. If the difference is constant in one step, then nth term is an expression with degree one for n. T n equal and two, A n plus B. N equal and two, one. It is A plus B. So this is two. N equal and two, two. So this will be two A plus B. A equal and two, three. B equal and two minus one. So T n is three N minus one. If I substitute N value one, three minus one, two. If I substitute N value two, six minus one, five. N value three, nine minus one, eight. N man, N value four, twelve minus one, eleven. N value five, fifteen minus one, fourteen. Idea it is clear? So we want twenty-three, three into twenty-three minus one. Sixty-nine minus one, sixty-eight. Sixty-nine minus one, sixty-eight. This is one way of looking at it. Now let us get into the doubt. This is one, three, six, ten, fifteen, twenty-one and so on. One, three, six, ten, fifteen, twenty-one and so on. Listen carefully sir. One and three, difference is two. Three and six, difference is three. This is difference four. This is difference five. This is difference six. This is difference one. This is difference one. This is difference one. This is difference one. Difference is constant in how many steps? Two steps. Here I got the difference constant in one step. If it is one step, it is an expression with degree one for n. If it is two steps, it is T n equal and two, A n square plus B n plus C. T n equal and two, A n square plus B n plus C. Now listen carefully. If I substitute N value one, this will become A plus B plus C. N value one, it is one. If I substitute N value two, this will become four A plus two B plus C. Four A plus two B plus C, which is three. If I substitute N value three, this will become nine A plus three B plus C. Nine A plus three B plus C, it is six. So if I subtract four A minus A, three B, three A. Two B minus B, it is B. Nine A minus four A, it is five A. Three B minus two B, it is B. I hope you are all there with me. Three minus one, two, six minus three, three. So if I do, five A minus three A, it is two. Five A minus three A, it is two. So this will also be, three minus two, it is one. Three minus two, it is one. So this will be, two A is equal and two one. Two A, it is equal and two one. Three A plus B, it is equal and two two. Three A plus B, it is equal and two two. A plus B plus C, it is equal and two one. So A value, this is the traditional method, every textbook will teach you like this. B is one by two, C is zero. A is one by two, B is one by two, C is zero. So T n is half N square plus half N plus C value zero, which is N into N plus one by two. N into N plus one by two. I hope the idea it is clear. Very beautiful way of looking at progressions where the difference is constant in more than one step. Here the difference is constant in one step. Nth term is an expression with degree one for n. Here, the difference is constant in two steps. So it is A n square plus B n plus C. N value one, it is one equal and two, A plus B plus C. N value two, it is four A plus two B plus C. N value three, it is nine A plus three B plus C. So difference is, four A minus A, three A, two B minus B B. Nine A minus four A, five A, three B minus two B B. Three minus one, two, six minus three, three. Three minus two, one. So two A will become one. Three A plus B will become two and A plus B plus C will become one. This is the traditional method which you will find it in any regular foreign textbooks. This method probably for the teachers who understand the hundred feet definition of arithmetic progression. They should be able to solve this question. They should be able to solve this question. I hope the idea it is clear. But in the examination, this method will take a lot of time. How can we optimize this method? Now see here. Now what is more important to me is, this is two A. Two A, it is equal and two one. This is two A. This is one. So two A, it is equal and two one. Three A plus B, it is equal and two two. A plus B plus C, it is equal and two one. Am I right? Two A, it is equal and two one. Three A plus B, it is equal and two two. A plus B plus C, it is equal and two one. Now listen carefully. Now listen, how to get the answer? What is two A? Two A is equal and two one. This is two A. What is three A plus B? Three A plus B is equal and two two. This is three A plus B. What is A plus B plus C? A plus B plus C is equal and two one. Whenever this kind of series are there, what you do is, leftmost just take the first terms. Leftmost just take the first terms. How to write down the answer? We will see it directly. One, three, six, ten, fifteen, twenty-one, twenty-eight and so on. So this will be two. This is three. This is four, five. Next is six. Next is seven. This is one. Here also one. This is one, this is one, this is one. Once you get the difference between the terms constant in two steps, then the answer is very easy. What is the answer? Just to take the leftmost terms. Just to take the leftmost terms. This is given by two A. I explained in the previous slide why it is two A. This is given by three A plus B. And this is given by A plus B plus C. This is given by A plus B plus C. Left hand side only one term. Leftmost term if you take, you will get all the answers. Two A equal and two one. A is one by two. Three A plus B, it is equal and two two. B is one by two. A plus B plus C, it is equal and two one. That means C value zero. C value zero. So T n is given by half N square plus half N. T n is given by half N square plus half N, which is given by N into N plus one by two. This is N into N plus one by two. Only take the leftmost values. This is two A. This is three A plus B and it is A plus B plus C. Whenever the difference between the terms is constant in two steps. This is two A, this is three A plus B and it is A plus B plus C. A is one by two. B is one by two and C value zero. A one by two, C one by two, C value zero. I hope the idea it is clear. I will tell you another way. But before that one, let me do some more problems. Directly just by looking at the question, you can get the answer. Two, seven, fourteen, twenty-three and so on. So find out the T fifty-first term. Find out the T fifty-first term. What will be the answer? So this will be, two, seven, fourteen, twenty-three and so on. So this will be five. This will be seven and it will be nine. This will be two. This will be two. So this is two A and this is three A plus B. And this is A plus B plus C. A plus B plus C. So two A is two, that means A value one. Three A plus B five, B value two. One plus two plus C equal and two two. C value minus one. C value minus one. So T n is A n square plus B n plus C. N square plus two N minus one. N square plus two N minus one. I hope the idea it is clear. So substitute N value one. One plus two, three, three minus one, two. Substitute N value two. Two square, four. Four plus four, eight, eight minus one, seven. N value three, three square plus two into three minus one. Nine plus six, fifteen, fifteen minus one, fourteen. I hope beneath the student to ask this question, how to get the answer orally? Only attack the leftmost. Only attack the leftmost. This is two A. This is three A plus B and it is A plus B plus C. Two A, three A plus B and A plus B plus C. Now, is there any other way to solve this question? Yes, we will see that another way also. This is one, three, six, ten, fifteen, twenty-one and so on. I want T twenty-third value. One, three, six, ten, fifteen, twenty-one. What we will do is, we will use bottom-up parsing. What is bottom-up parsing? Let us understand by taking these example. Now if you see here. If you see here, one, four, seven, ten, thirteen. This is three. This is three. This is three. This is. Three and so on. Am I right? One, three, right? Can I write it, can I write it like this? One, four, seven. T n is given by A plus N minus one in two D. A plus N minus one in two D. Am I right? So this is A plus three N minus three. Three N minus two. Three N minus two. This is the generic value. Now if you see here, one, three, six, ten, fifteen, twenty-one. This is two. This is three. This is four. This is five. This is six. Difference is two, three, four, five, six. Difference is one. One, one, one. Let us do from the bottom to top. T n is given by, what is the first difference? One plus N minus one, C one. Because it is A plus N minus one in two D, right? I am doing from the bottom to top. Same thing I am using from bottom to top. The diff, here it is, first it is one. A plus N minus one into two. I am only attacking these values. Plus, N minus one, C two. Into one. N minus one, C two into one. Suppose if I take T three, this will become, one plus three minus one, two C one into two. Plus, three minus one, two C two into one. One plus two C one, it is two. Two twos are four plus one. One plus four plus one, it is six. Third term, it is six. Third term, it is six. Very, very interesting way to find out the answer orally. Just by looking at the question, you will get the answer. Same idea, A plus N minus one in two D. The same representation I am doing by using bottom-up parsing. First I will start with one. Leftmost terms only you should take care. Leftmost terms only you should take care. One plus, this is N minus one into C one. A plus N minus one in two D. So one plus, this is, in the first step it is constant, N minus one, C one into T. This is the second value. It is N minus one, C two into one. N minus one, C two into one. I hope the idea it is clear. Directly you will get the answer. Even in the third step, the difference is constant also, it is there. One plus N minus one, C one into two and one plus N minus one, C one, C two into one. So if I substitute T value four, let us check it out. One plus, four minus one, three. Three into two, six. Four minus one. Four minus one, three. Three C two into one. So this is fourth term. Please check it out whether you are getting the fourth term. So N value four, one plus four minus one. Four minus one is four. Four twos are eight. Eight plus one, nine. Fourth term, one, two, three, four. Next one, four minus one. Four minus one is three. Three C two. Let me take this value here. If I take T four, this will be, one plus, two into N minus one, C one. Plus one into N minus one, C two. So this is one plus two into, four minus one, three C one. One plus four minus one, three C two. This is three. Three twos are six. Six plus three plus one, which is ten. Very, very beautiful way of finding the nth term. If the difference between the terms is constant in some steps, whether it is two steps, three steps, three step, four steps, we can continue the process. I hope the idea it is clear. Next one, let us solve this question. Two, seven, fourteen, twenty-three and so on. T fifty equal and two. Two, seven, fourteen, twenty-three and so on. T fifty equal and two. What will be the answer? Two, seven, fourteen, twenty-three. This is five. This is seven and it is nine. This is two and here also it is two. So directly T n is given by bottom-up approach. Go from bottom to top. Two plus N minus one into C one into five plus two plus N minus one into C two. N minus one into C two. Check it out for N value two. Two plus, two minus one, two. Two C one into five. Two minus one, one C two. It is not possible. It is not possible. So N value two, two plus, two minus one. Two minus one is one C one. One C one. One C one, it is one. Two plus five, it is seven. Second value, it is seven. Directly you can get the answer. You will not find this concept in any of the regular textbook. Any of the regular textbook. Go from bottom to top. Two plus, A plus N minus one in two D. Two plus N minus one, C one into five plus two into N minus one, C two. If I am doing N value three, it is three minus, three minus, it is two C one into five plus two into, three minus one, two C two. Ten plus two, twelve. Twelve plus two, fourteen. T three, it is fourteen. Even if you want to solve it also, I told you another method. It is two A. It is three A plus B and it is A plus B plus C. Two A, three A plus B and A plus B plus C. Depending upon your comfort zone, you can take any concept that comes into your mind. I hope this idea it is clear, right? Now sir, how to find out the sum of terms? Nth term we found out. This is one, three, six, ten, fifteen, twenty-one and so on. One, three, six, ten, fifteen, twenty-one and so on. What is the nth term we got? Nth term, it is half N square plus half N. Half N, which is summation N square plus summation N by two. Summation N square plus summation N. If I apply summa, sum of N terms, sum is nothing but giving summation to the value. So half summation N square plus half summation N. Summation N square, it is given by, N into, N plus one into, two N plus one divided by six. Summation N is given by, N into, N plus one divided by two. If I substitute this, I will get this answer. This is a traditional method of solving the problem. This is a traditional method of solving. This is a traditional method of solving the problem. Now let us do Anil Nayyar's way of solving the problem. How you will get the answer orally? For me, everything it is logic sir. It is, sum of N terms is given by N by two into two A plus N minus one into D. N by two into, two A plus N minus one into D. So it is N C one into A plus N C two into D. Are you all with me? S N is given by, N C one is N, N into A plus N into N minus one by two into D. Can I write like this? N C one into A plus N C two into D. Once I write like this, the concept is very clear to me. One, three, six, ten, fifteen, twenty-one. This is two, this is three, this is four, this is five, this is six. This is one, this is one, this is one, this is one. So S N is given by, N C one into one plus N C two into two plus N C three into one. Finish. N C one into one plus N C two into two plus N C three into three. If I substitute N value three, three C one plus three C two into two plus three C three. Three C three, it is one. Three C one, it is three. One plus three, four, four plus six, ten. So sum of first three terms, one, three, six. One plus three plus six, it is equal and two ten. One plus three plus six, it is equal and two ten. What I did is just nothing but understanding the notation from the generic textbook and finding out the concept. N C one into A plus N C two into D. Why N C two came? Suppose if I see here, differences, differences if you see here, one, four, seven, ten, thirteen. This is three, 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 three. First step, second step, second step, difference is three. So N C two into D. Similarly here, first, second, third. So N C one into A, N C two into two and N C three into one. Simple answer, N C three into one. You will not find this concept in any of the regular textbook. What am I doing is, I am taking the doubt of the student and I am trying to build concepts which will help you to understand this concept beautifully. I hope the idea it is clear. Suppose if the question is, two, seven, fourteen, twenty-three and so on. Two, seven, fourteen, twenty-three and so on. Now what will be the answer? This is five, this is seven and it is nine. This is two and here also it is two. Two, seven, fourteen, twenty-three and so on. Five, seven, nine, two, two, two. What will be sum of N terms? Sum of N terms is, N C one into A plus N C two into D. N C one into A, N C one into two. Second one, N C two into five plus third one, N C three into two. N C three into two. Directly, this is the answer. Suppose I want sum of two terms. It will be two C one into two plus two C two into five plus two C three. Two C three into two. Out of two items selecting three, this meaningless. One into five, five plus two twos are four, four plus five, nine. Sum of two terms, it is nine, sum of two terms, it is nine. I hope it is clear. Just to teach you these new concepts, I am taking the doubts at the beginning of the class. I am taking the doubts at the beginning of the class. S N equal and two, N C one into two plus N C two into five. So N C one, I want N value three. If I want N value three, three C one into two, three C two into five, three C three into two. If you add it, you will get twenty-three. Very beautiful problems, I hope it is very, very clear to you. How to write down this answer? If I go by this approach, if I go by this approach, this is a formula approach. Summation N square and summation N, these are all formula-based approach. If I use formula-based, it will take a lot of time. Anyway, Anil Nayyar's way, work with the logic. What I did, nth term in an AP is, A plus N minus one into D. Sum of N terms is given by, A plus N min- N by two into, two A plus N minus one into D. I just took that formulas. From that formula, I developed the other problems. I hope the idea it is clear. I hope the student who asked the question beneath, I hope the ideas are clear. So which are all the concepts that we discussed till now? The concepts which we discussed are, how to find the nth term for this series? Nth term, you have to use A plus N minus one into D notation. How to find out the sum of N terms notation? Sum of N terms for this notation, you have to use, N C one into A plus N C two into D. The difference between the terms is constant in one step. It is N C one into A plus N C two into D. N C one into A plus N C two into D. From there, the process continues. Sir, how to solve this kind of problems? Third problem, this is one doubt which we clarified. Now let us see the third problem doubt, third problem. Third problem, these are some very, very good concepts sir. Very, very good concepts. Ten comma, twenty-three comma, sixty comma, one sixty-nine comma, four thirty-four. Very, very good question. Find the twelfth term in the series, another doubt. Ten comma, twenty-three comma, sixty comma, one sixty-nine comma, four thirty-four. Find the twelfth term in the series. So this is given by, another beautiful concept, concept. Listen carefully sir. Ten comma, twenty-three comma, sixty comma, one sixty-nine comma, four thirty-four. So the difference is, ten twenty-three, it is thirteen. This is thirty-seven, this is hundred and nine and this is three twenty-five. Three twenty-five, thirteen, this is thirty-seven, this is hundred and nine and it is three twenty-five. Thirteen with thirty-seven, twenty-four. Thirty-seven with hundred and nine, seventy-two. Hundred and nine with three twenty-five, it is two sixteen, it is two sixteen. Now if you observe, this is a very peculiar kind of series where the difference between the terms is forming a GP series. Where the difference between the terms is forming a GP series. Write down these note, that is the reason it is kept in the CAT mock paper note. If the difference between the terms, if the difference between the terms, if the difference between the terms is forming a GP series. If the difference between the terms is forming a GP series, then nth term is given by, A into R power N plus five of N. A into R power N plus five of N. A into R power N plus five of N. What is five of N? Five of N will be a linear function. Five of N will be a linear function. If the difference is constant in two steps, five of N will be a quadratic function. Five of N will be a quadratic function. If the difference between the terms is constant in three steps. If the difference between the terms is constant in three steps. T N, these are very, very important notes sir. Most of the students probably might be unaware of these thing. If the difference between the terms is forming a GP series. If the difference between the terms is forming a GP series, then nth term is given by, A into R power N plus five of N. Five of N is linear if the difference is constant in two steps. Five of N is quadratic if the difference between the terms is constant in three steps. If the difference between the terms is constant in three steps. Idea it is clear? Now let us discuss, solve this question. These are some very, very good questions which came in the CAT mock papers. So idea is to make my students learn the concept and try to solve it very easily. Ten, twenty-three, sixty, one sixty-nine. So this is thirteen, this is thirty-seven, this is hundred and nine. This is three twenty-five, this is twenty-four, this is seventy-two. It is three sixteen, two sixteen. Twenty-four, seventy-two and two sixteen. R value, it is three, R value, it is three. This is the first step and it is the second step. First step and the second step. So T N is given by, A into R power N. In the second step, it is constant. So it is B N plus C. T N is given by, A into R power N plus B N plus C. So if I keep R value three, A into three power N plus B N plus C. If we find out the values of A, B and C, we will get the answer. R value is the ratio of the terms where the difference is constant. Seventy-two by twenty-four, three, two sixteen by seventy-two, three. T N is given by, A into three power N plus B N plus C. N value one, so it is A into three power one plus B into one plus C. So N value one, which is given by ten. N value two, so this will be given by, A into three square plus B into two plus C. This is twenty-three. N value three, this is A into three cube plus B into three plus C. This is sixty. Twenty-three and ten, this is thirteen. Sixty and twenty-three, this is thirty-seven. Thirty-seven and thirteen, it is twenty-four. Twenty-three and ten, thirteen. Sixty and twenty-three, thirty-seven. Thirty-seven and thirteen, it is twenty-four. So here we will write in variables, I wrote it in constant. Same process, what we did in AP, the same thing which we are doing it in GP also. So this will be, nine A minus three A, six A, two B minus B, B. Twenty-seven minus nine, eighteen A plus B. Eighteen A minus six A, which is twelve A. Twelve A is twenty-four. Twelve A value, it is twenty-four. That means A value will be two, A value will be two. Six A plus B, it is thirteen. Six A plus B, it is thirteen. That means B value one. A value two, B value one. C value will be three, C value will be three. So answer for this question is, T N is, A into B power N plus B N plus C. This is the generic expression of this series. Two into three power N plus N plus three. Put N value one, two into three, six, six plus four, ten. Put N value two, nine into two, eighteen, eighteen plus five, twenty-three. Put N value three, three cube, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twos are fifty-four. So fifty-four plus six, sixty. Idea it is clear? Idea, I hope the idea it is clear. Now from whatever I said in AP, you can find it out. It is R power one, R square. Difference will be R square minus R. It is R into R minus one. From there, I want you to derive your own conclusion. Very, very good CAT mock level question. Where a series is given to you, where you need to find out the nth term of the series. If I want ten value, substitute T ten. If I want twelve, substitute N value twelve. If I want ten value thirteen, substitute seven. I hope the idea it is clear. I hope the idea it is clear. These doubt also, I handled it. I thought of taking a session which will clarify all the students' doubts. So which all doubts, these two are over. Find the nth term, it is over. Find the sum of N terms also, it is over. Now let us see the last two digits of these number, last two digits of these number. But before that one, I wanted to take a problem and I wanted to explain right, why students get confused. Suppose if it is eleven power eleven power eleven divided by nine. Eleven power eleven power eleven divided by nine. Yesterday we did it in the reminders class, eleven power eleven power eleven divided by nine. Now if you see here, method one, method one, method one. Positive reminder. Method two, negative reminder. Method two, negative reminder. Very, very good doubt asked by a student, so I will clarify the doubt. Method one, positive reminder. Method two, negative reminder. Method one, nine ones are nine. Positive reminder is two. So it is two power eleven power eleven divided by nine. Two power eleven power eleven divided by nine. Now listen carefully. Which power of two when divided by nine, I will get plus one. Two power six divided by nine, it is plus one. S R no? Sixty-four divided by nine, nine sevens are sixty-three, reminder, it is one. I took one, one power any natural number, it is one. So I divide this number with this number. So eleven power eleven divided by six. Six twos are twelve, minus one, minus one power R D is minus one. Positive reminder, it is five. Eleven power eleven, when divided by six, reminder, five. So eleven power eleven is six K plus five. So this will be, two power six K plus five divided by nine. Thirty-two by nine, nine threes are twenty-seven. Positive reminder, it is five. Yesterday we solved it. This is a very simple way of solving the question. Finding out which power of numerator, when divided by denominator, I will get one. Two power six divided by nine, it is one. Two power six divided by nine, it is one. Method one, I hope the concept is clear. Method two, sir, why can't I take like this? Reminder one, two cube divided by nine is minus one. I will take a negative reminder. Tell me what is the difference between this method and this method? Here, one power any natural number, it is one. Here, minus one power odd number, it is minus one. Minus one power even number, it is plus one. Two cube divided by nine is minus one. So if I take eleven power eleven divided by three, three fours are twelve, minus one. Minus one power odd, minus one. Positive reminder, it is two. So eleven power eleven is dividend equal and two, divisor into quotient plus reminder. Eleven power eleven is three K plus two. Eleven is an odd number. Odd number power any number, it is an odd number. Two is an even number, two is an even number. Three is an odd number. If K is an even number, even into any number, even. Even plus even, even. That means K has to be odd. K has to be odd. Here in this case, in this case, we are taking the factor of six, which has three. We have to find out the nature of K. K is an odd number here. So K is an odd number. So this will become, two power three K plus two divided by nine. Eight by nine minus one, minus one power R D is minus one into four. Negative reminder, minus four. Positive reminder, five. Negative reminder, minus one. Positive reminder, four. I hope the idea it is clear. Two cube divided by nine is minus one. Divide these power by three. Three fours are twelve, minus one power odd, minus one. Positive reminder, it is two. So eleven power eleven is three K plus two. So it is, two power three K plus two divided by nine. Eight divided by nine, minus one power odd. We are finding the nature of K whether it is even or odd. That is the reason this method, we are getting two cases. Whether minus one power even number, it is plus one. Minus one power odd number, it is minus one. So what should be the nature of K? What should be the nature of K? So that these L H S is equal and two R H S. L H S is equal and two R H S. Now let's go back. Let's go back, what is the doubt asked by a student? Twenty-eight power, one twenty-one power, two thirty. Same case, now see here, one power any natural number, one power any natural number, it is one. One power any natural number, it is one. One minus one power even number, minus one power even number, it is one. Minus one power odd number, minus one power odd number, it is minus one. This is the thing, this is the thing. The same case whenever you are finding the last two digits of a number. Whenever you are finding the last two digits of a number. Whenever we are finding the last two digits of a number. Whenever we are finding the last two digits of a number. Now see here, twenty-four power odd number, it is twenty-four. Twenty-four power odd number, it is twenty-four. Twenty-four power even number, it is seventy-six. So seventy-six power any natural number, seventy-six power any natural number, it is seventy-six. Twenty-four power odd number, twenty-four. Twenty-four power even number, seventy-six. Seventy-six power any natural number. If you see here, the seventy-six is behaving like one, this is behaving like one. So ideally when we are taking the last two digits, when it is ending with two, four, six are eight. When it ends with two, four, six are right. Ideally here, if I take twenty-four, I have to find out the nature of K, whether it is even or odd. So we will always take seventy-six. Two power ten is one zero two four. Two power twenty is, two power ten into two power ten, which is one zero two four into one zero two four. Which is ending with seventy-six. That means when it is having a power twenty for two, last two digits, it is seventy-six. We will not take power ten. If I take power ten, I have to find out what is the nature of a power, whether it is even or odd. I will not get into that cases method. Similarly, four power ten, four power ten is four raised to square. Two power twenty, it is also seventy-six. If I take eight power ten, it is two power thirty. Two power thirty is two power twenty into two power ten. Seventy-six into twenty-four, again it is twenty-four. So I will take eight power twenty. So two power three power twenty, sixty is a multiple of twenty, answer it is seventy-six. This is the generic case to find out the last two digits of a number. This is the generic case. If I take these twenty-four case, we have to find out the nature of power as even or odd. Which might be little cumbersome for you to determine. That is where you will get a doubt. So any problem related to where the unit digit is two, four, six are right. Ideally take for two twenty, two power twenty is seventy-six, seventy-six we have to take. Four raised to square, so four power ten, eight power twenty. Now let us write down the logic. A two power twenty, it is seventy-six. A four power ten, it is seventy-six. A eight power ten, twenty, it is seventy-six. Use these as a generic notation, use these as a generic notation. If you use it as a ten, then probably you have to find out the power of ten. Because if you write like this, A eight power ten K. If K is two, which is even, this will become eight power twenty, last two digits will become seventy-six. If K is three, A eight power thirty, this will become eight power ninety, it will become twenty-four. Two cases you will get, where if K is even, K is odd. To avoid these cases, let us do like this, let us do like this. A two power twenty K, any multiple of twenty, last two digit seventy-six. Any multiple of ten, last two digit seventy-six, if the unit digit is four. Any multiple of twenty, last two digits is seventy-six. With this understanding, let us solve the doubt. All the doubts that students have asked, they are all very, very good doubts sir, very, very good doubts. So first question is, twenty-eight power one twenty-one power two thirty. Twenty-eight power one twenty-one power two thirty. Twenty-eight power one twenty-one power two thirty. It is ending with eight, if it is ending with eight. So what is the logic we know? A eight power twenty K, last two digits is seventy-six. A eight power twenty K, last two digits is seventy-six. So this will become reminder, I hope the, now it will be clear. One twenty-one power two thirty divided by twenty, twenty-six are one twenty. Reminder one, one twenty-one power two thirty, it is twenty K plus one. It is twenty K plus one. So this will become twenty-eight power twenty K plus one. Twenty-eight power twenty K into twenty-eight, eight power twenty K seventy-six. Seventy-six into twenty-eight, it is the answer. Seventy-six into twenty-eight, it is the answer. I hope the idea it is clear. In case if you take ten, in case if you take ten, you will get one twenty-one power two thirty. Equal into ten K plus one, equal into ten K plus one, equal into ten K plus one. Now if you see here, whether K is even or odd, that also can be determined. Suppose one twenty-one, one twenty-one divided by four, four thirties are one twenty. Reminder one, left hand side when divided by four, it gives a reminder one. This is giving a reminder one when divided by four. If I take K value odd, odd is ten plus one, eleven. Eleven is four into two plus three, four into two plus three, four K plus three form. But I want four P plus V form. So K if I take one, it is four P plus three. K if I take three, thirty-one, four sevens are twenty-eight plus three, four K plus three form. Fifty plus one, four K plus three form. K cannot take one three five, K has to take two, four, six or eight. Twenty plus one, twenty-one, twenty-one is four into something plus one. Forty-one is four into ten plus one. Sixty-one is four into fifteen plus one. That means even if I take ten, I can find out the, find the nature of K as even and it can substitute. I hope Nitish, your doubt is very clear. When you do it with twenty, whatever answer that you get here also, you will get the same answer. If I do it with ten, this will be reminder, one twenty-one power two thirty divided by ten, it is one. One twenty-one power two thirty, it is ten K plus one. What is K we got? K we got as an even number. So this will be twenty-eight power ten K plus one. It is twenty-eight power ten K into twenty-eight. It is even, even means ten twos are twenty, twenty is multiple of twenty. Twenty-ones are twenty, K is four, forty is a multiple of twenty. K value six, it is a multiple of twenty. Answer is seventy-six into twenty-eight, same answer you got. Whether you do it with ten or whether you do it with twenty, you will get the same answer. The only difference is when you divide by twenty, you don't need to find the nature of K. K is a natural number. When you do it with ten, you have to find out the nature of K whether it is even or odd. That can easily give from one twenty-one, one twenty-one divided by four. Four thirties are one twenty, reminder one. These reminder one, if I take K value one, three and so on, I will not get, I will not get reminder one. I hope the idea it is clear. Most of the CAT enrolled students might be having a doubt. When I was about to come to the studio, I got four to five messages from a student in the Telegram group. Please clarify these doubts. So I thought I will discuss it for one and all. When it is divided by ten, how to do it? And when it is divided by twenty, how to do it? Both the cases you got the same answer. There is no mistake in any of these concept, both the cases you will get the answer. Next one, what is the next question? Doubt eighty-six power ninety-four power one twenty-three. Eighty-six power ninety-four power one twenty-three. Eighty-six power ninety-four power one twenty-three. What is the logic that we discussed? A six power five K, last two digits will be seventy-six. A six power five K, last two digits will be seventy-six. This is the logic that we used, this is the logic that we used. So this will be reminder one, ninety-four power one twenty-three divided by five. Five nineths are ninety-five, minus one power odd, minus one, positive reminder it is four. So ninety-four power one twenty-three, when divided by five, reminder it is four. So this will be eighty-six power five K plus four. Eighty-six power five K into eighty-six power four. This is seventy-six. Into eighty-six square into eighty-six square. Seventy-six into eighty-six square, fourteen square, here also fourteen square. Seventy-six into one ninety-six into one ninety-six. Ninety-six divided by hundred, minus four, minus four. Seventy-six into sixteen, seventy-six multiplied by any power of two. Last two digits will be equal and to the last two digits of the power of two. A six power five K, last two digits is always seventy-six. A six power five K, last two digits will always be seventy-six. I hope Nitish, your doubt is clear. What is the other question? I will do one more question. Fifty-eight power sixty-two power sixty-nine power eighty-three. Find the last two digits for sixty-two power sixty-nine power eighty-three. Sixty-nine power eighty-three. What is the logic that we discussed? A two power twenty K, A two power twenty K, last two digits, it is seventy-six. Or A two power ten, it is twenty-four. A two power ten, it is twenty-four. So both the methods I will tell you, so that you will crystal clearly understand this one. Method one, method one, method one, listen carefully sir. Method one, you, let me take twenty. So this will become reminder one, sixty-nine power eighty-three divided by twenty. Twenty it is four into five, four into five. If the denominator it is a composite number, write the number as a product of co-primes. Twenty it is four into five. Sixteen-nine divided by four, four seventeens are sixty-eight. Reminder one, it is four A plus one. Five fourteens are seventy, minus one, minus one power odd, minus one. So it is five B minus one, are you all with me? Four seventeens are sixty-eight, reminder one. Five fourteens are seventy, minus one, minus one power odd, minus one. So it is four A equal and two, five B minus two. Four A equal and two, four B plus B minus two. This is divisible by four, divisible by four. So B minimum has to be two, two minus two, it is zero. So ten minus one, it is nine, ten minus one, it is nine. That means it is sixty-two power twenty K plus nine. Sixty-two power twenty K plus nine. Sixty-two power twenty K into sixty-two power nine. This is seventy-six. How to find out sixty-two power nine? This is sixty-two square power four into sixty-two. This is seventy-six. Sixty-two square raised twelve more than fifty, it is twelve square. Twelve square raised one forty-four, power four into sixty-two. Seventy-six into forty-four square, whole square into sixty-two. Now it is calculation, seventy-six into forty-four square raised six square. Thirty-six square raised one two nine six into sixty-two. Generic calculation, write down ninety-six as minus four when divided by hundred. This is by using this method. A two power twenty K, sixty-nine power eighty-three divided by twenty. Twenty it is four into five. So sixty-nine divided by four, reminder one. Sixteen-nine divided by five, it is five B minus one. Four A equal and two, five B minus two. Four A equal and two, four B plus B minus two. Divisible by four, divisible by four. B minimum it is two, ten minus one, nine. This is one way to solve. I will also do it with ten and whatever the answer that you get, how much it is? Seventy-six into minus four into sixty-two. Ninety-six divided by hundred is minus four. These minus, six fours are twenty-four, minus zero four into sixty-two. Sixty-two is minus thirty-eight. So thirty-eight into four, this is one fifty-two, answer is fifty-two. Answer is fifty-two, this is one way to solve. Let us do it with ten K. After this class, no student should again ask me, sir, should I take ten or twenty? In both the cases, you will get the same answer. First case I took it, I got the answer, let me take the second case. Let me take the second case, sixty-two power sixty-nine power eighty-three. So let me take with ten, sixteen-nine power eighty-three divided by ten. Ten sevenths are seventy, minus one, minus one power odd is minus one. Positive reminder it is nine. So sixteen-nine power eighty-three it is, when divided by ten, it is reminder nine. Sixteen-nine power eighty-three, when divided by ten, reminder it is nine. Sixteen-nine when divided by four, reminder it is one. Left hand side, when divided by four, it gives a reminder one. Left hand side, when divided by four, it gives a reminder one. K if I take odd number, ten ones are one, ten plus nine, nineteen. Nineteen when divided by four, reminder three. That means K should be an even number, K should be an even number. K is two, twenty plus nine, twenty-nine. Four sevens are twenty-eight plus one, reminder one. K is four, forty-nine, forty-nine divided by four, reminder one. So K is even. So this will become sixty-two power ten K plus nine. So this will become sixty-two power ten K into sixty-two power nine. K is two, twenty, K is four, forty. It is equal and two, seventy-six into sixty-two power nine. Same value which we got it, seventy-six into sixty-two power nine. I hope the idea it is clear, where is that problem? Seventy-six into, seventy-six into sixty-two power nine. Here also we got seventy-six into sixty-two power nine. I hope the idea it is very, very clear to most of the students. I am sure right now you have understood that whether by taking a ten or twenty, answer will not change. Should I just to give an indication to the, another question, question is, fifty-eight power seventy-one power ninety-three? Let us see, fifty-eight power seventy-one power ninety-three. Fifty-eight power seventy-one power ninety-three. What is the concept? Eight power ten is twenty-four. Eight power ten, last two digits, it is twenty-four. Let me check it out, whether K is even or K is odd. Last two digits, it is twenty-four. So this will become reminder one, seventy-one power ninety-three divided by ten. Ten, ten sevenths are seventy, reminder one. Forty, seventy-one power ninety-three, when divided by ten, reminder it is one. Seventy-one power ninety-three, ten sevenths are Seventy one power ninety three, ten sevens are seventy, reminder one. Seventy one, four eighteens are seventy two, minus one, minus one power R D is minus one. That means it is of the form four X plus three. It is of the form four X plus three. Four eighteens are seventy two, seventy two is minus one, minus one power R D is minus one. Positive reminder three. If I take K value even, twenty one, reminder one. K value four, reminder one, that means K value here it is odd. K value here it is odd. Now you will get the answer very easily. Fifty eight power ten K plus one. Fifty eight power ten K into fifty eight. K value, one odd number. Eight power ten is two power thirty, two power thirty, it is twenty four. Twenty four into fifty eight, twenty four into fifty eight, it is the answer. I hope the idea it is clear. So what I did right now is, I collected all the doubts asked by students. The doubts which probably other students will also get. I took the doubts and I clarified all the doubts, very, very good doubts. The students have asked me for power to power, whether we should take ten or twenty. Sir, how to find out for this kind of series? If the difference between the terms is constant in some steps. Difference is constant in two steps. Here, difference is forming a GP series. So let this class be a class of doubt clarifying session, then I shall get back to you in the next class. For the next ten to fourteen days, I will not take out any doubt clarifying sessions. Because I am running late with six classes, I need to come back and complete these six classes. By the time I reach the next Sunday. Thank you, with love, Anil Nayar.